Being six o'clock, this meeting of the Board of Selectmen is called to order. First item on the agenda is accepted to the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Purpose of this meeting is to, after close to three months of reading resumes and interviewing candidates, we feel very, very fortunate that we have, we feel we've come up with four outstanding individuals to be our finalists for Town Administrator here in Situate. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to publicly interview those four candidates once again, once again in public, I should say. Have them say a little bit about themselves to not only us, but now to the entire town, the cable TV and the people here tonight. There'll be approximately half hour interviews, give or take, whatever, a few minutes, whatever it takes. At the end of this, Patricia, we'll probably ask you to submit a list of references to Kim Donovan, and we have her email address here. And that's probably going to be the format, more or less, for the entire evening. So if you don't mind, again, welcome. We had the pleasure of seeing you a few weeks ago, and we welcome you back. We'll start off as we did a few weeks ago, and if you would just bring not only ourselves, but the rest of the town up to date on who you are and why you're here in Situate tonight, is the best way to put it.
Well, thank you, and thank you for writing down the very, very happy name. As a short nap, a little quick synopsis of my background. I've been a public servant for the past 23 years, almost all of that in the local government. I started working 100 percent sponsored by the Commonwealth. There are three small towns, and just passed the 495 belt in 1986, and that's my first work in government as a local government manager. The problem of the housing community development is definitely the salary of towns that needed a first time professional administrator. So I worked for three towns that weren't contiguous for about two and a half years. I had come from Washington, D.C., after working for Congressman Ed Markey for six years as an incoming on part of his staff. But I always wanted to work in local government, and concentration's in local government. I moved out to Western Massachusetts when I got married, served eight years as a town administrator in Long Meadow. I was very, very happy there, but I had two young girls at the time, so I developed a job share in the town of Whately with another person, and worked there for three and a half years as town administrator, and also did some consulting. From there, went to the University of Massachusetts as Director of Community Relations. My first love was still local government, and even though I joined the town and the area around UMass, I wanted to get back into local government, so I went to South Hadley and was there for eight years. I accepted the job with the Springfield Finance Control Board in November of '07, knowing the job would end June 30th. Two reasons motivated at the vision. One is I wanted to know and experience what it was like to work in an urban environment for a mayor, which was different than town meeting. I had had open town meeting and representative town meeting. I also wanted to serve Springfield, because they're an urban area. The other thing, South Hadley was going through a charter change for a mayor, and I thought at that time, okay, we need to move on. So here I am, with the control board ending June 30th. I have an opportunity to stay in Springfield for a little while longer if I choose, even though the job is ending. But I decided to apply for Situate and only one other position in the last six months, because it was one that piqued my interest, one that to rekindle the board and the town citizens' credit, I think is very well financed and managed in a conservative yet programmatic and thoughtful manner. I think it's a beautiful community, and all the research that I've done and the folks I've talked to have only impressed me more and made me more desirous of coming here.
Good, thank you. Thank you for bringing us all up to date. The board itself has asked quite a few questions in the earlier interviews. We're going to try to synopsonize, you know, try to bring these all together, so that we're not repeating the same questions, each one of us. But one of the first questions that came up last time, and it's here again tonight, and I'll start off with the board's position, is the commute. We recognize the fact that, will you explain once again how you intend to handle the fact that your family currently lives in South Hadley, if I'm correct?
Conway, but...
Conway, right next to, yeah, right up in the same area, where, well, you'll be working down here. So why don't you take, answer that if you could, first of all?
Sure, and I think that that's a valid, valid question, and one that I think you need to have a comfortable answer and feel comfortable with my response. It's not my intent to drive back and forth from Conway every single day, which is two hours and 45 minutes away, as the highways go. But I do have a daughter that's a junior in high school. I have another daughter that's starting college in the fall. So my intent would be to relocate here on a rental basis during the week, and then as soon as my daughter graduated from high school, my husband and I would move here. And as I mentioned, he's here today. And my intent really is to make my next job move, my last job move. I have 25 years, I have a good 15 or 20 left. I am impressed with the fact that Rick has been here 19 years, which is an incredible testament, not only to the town and the boards he's worked with, but he himself. And that is something that I would like to see myself doing and making a long-term commitment to a community.
Something I think that we're also looking for, you know, we've seen communities that, for one reason or another, have a new town administrator every two years, every year and a half, every three years, and overall, it just doesn't seem to work very well. So we are also looking for someone to be here for a long time, whatever that is.
And we talked a little bit about that at my first interview, that often things take long, long time, planning, preparation, research, review. Sometimes it has to go to town meeting two or three times till it's just right or funding's in place. So for me personally and professionally, I think you have to be in a place a while before you begin to even get to recognize the fruits of your labors, because so much time these days goes into planning and before you can really get out of the gate and actually realize what you've started.
Thank you. For the board, we'll open it up, whoever, no particular order, whoever would like to ask a question, jump right in.
It was just, maybe you answered this the first time, but you had one other resume out there, is that currently, or no, it's just we're the only?
No, I applied for two positions. My plan was January 1 to start thinking about my next move, knowing that the control board was June 30th. So I think on the same day, I applied for both Hopkinton and Situate. I was a finalist in Hopkinton, that process concluded last March, this past March. This is the only other job I've applied for, I have active...
To go along with that, you mentioned that you have another opportunity in Springfield for a certain amount of time after June 30th. What is that? Is that still with the board?
No. Under, the way the control board sunsets is that a new special act was passed by the legislature to replace the control board special act, and that creates a chief administrative and financial officer position for the first time in Springfield. There was a search for that, and it was discontinued, and a new search is ongoing, but since that person, as you know, these searches can take a while, the second search hasn't even started yet. So the mayor, by statute, is allowed to appoint an acting chief administrator and financial officer. My boss, the director of the control board, has been serving in that, director of the control board and acting CAFO up until now. He will continue July 1 as just acting CAFO when the control board goes away, and has asked me to stay on as the deputy. So, but again, that's, the statute is very clear that that's only until a permanent CAFO is hired.
I know you're talking about the commitment, and again, I know that Mr. Norton had asked you the question, but I'm like, so you're confident that, you know, your intent is to remain here in Situate for like the week, is that what your intent is, and then to travel on the weekends back and forth?
Or have them come here.
Or have them come here, okay. Because that's one of the major concerns that I know I have, is the short term. Like anything, things can sometimes appear not to be what they expect to be, and then the town of Situate would be put into a position, which is not your intent or anybody else's intent, of, shall we say, of having to relook again in two to three years, which is a major issue. And the reason why I ask that is because I understand that your husband is committed to his position where he is, but I mean, you're saying that after two years, that you are prepared, if you were the applicant, if you were the town administrator, then to move here, and your husband is also committed to that?
Mm-hmm. Obviously, it requires a leap of faith on both our parts.
Correct, correct.
Many times during my career, people, when I worked in Long Meadow, it was 42 miles from Conway, and people were concerned about that. When I had two children that were under the age of four, that was a concern, that I couldn't make the commitment. And not that you're going to go and talk to everybody I've worked with for the 20 years, that has never been an issue in terms of my availability or commitment. We had a huge hazardous waste, blades in South Hadley two years ago, where the 80 people need to be evacuated. I never left in four days. I was on scene within an hour and a half. So again, you have my commitment that, you know, if we have a relationship and it's ongoing, and I want to make a commitment, and you do, then part of that is, you know, not leaving every Friday or every other Friday.
In that same vein, when you mentioned South Hadley, have you had experience with like the local emergency planning committee and setting it up, whether it was in Long Meadow or anything along that lines? I mean, our town, we certainly have for emergencies, but I'm saying for some type of pandemic or anything along that lines. Have you had experience establishing that or being involved?
Yes.
I know you wouldn't have it in Springfield because of your situation there, but what about the other communities?
Yes, I did, and as you know, after 911, there became a lot more mandates to communities in terms of the NIMS training and additional online training courses. So I really, one of my goals that year was to spearhead getting all staff trained in that. And I actually had, I went through three or four of those trainings. And actually, one of them we had just completed before this hazardous waste incident in South Hadley. So when the board arrived on scene, it was really helpful, because they had just all been updated on incident command. So instead of arriving at a scene where it was unfamiliar, they actually knew how the layout was, the public information officer, how all that would play out. So, yeah, I've had experience with that.
Have you also, in your experience, and again, I'm excluding Springfield, because Springfield is a kind of, I think, a unique situation. Have you had experience with capital projects within the towns? And an example would be either a town hall, a school, or a senior center, and if you have, could you explain to us what kind of, you know, involvement you've had in those regards?
Are you talking construction?
Construction, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, first of all, there's the capital plan and funding the capital plan, and then as far as actual construction, right before I left South Hadley, we had received an urban self-help grant for $400,000 to build a clubhouse at our golf course. So I was in, on the planning stages for that. Up until that point, as part of submitting the grant application, we already had to do full architectural design and review. Clearly, in Springfield, we're building $125 million vocational technical school, and I've been involved, that was one of the things I was assigned to right when I went to Springfield, because the school building authority regulations are completely new, the requirements and the hoops, as you know, to jump through are completely different now. So I've been the point person on making sure Chapter 149, the architectural requirements for CMR at risk and those types of things. So I have had some experience in that.
Transitioning to another area, I was curious, you know, clearly, I would probably hypothesize that the town has, within its departments, strong personalities, okay, various departments, and good personalities, I might add. But if I were to ask you, what would your approach be to leading and coordinating a team that clearly would have, how do you approach that, in your, shall we say, your managerial style?
Just to clarify, in terms of managing the staff?
Correct, the staff.
Or levels?
Not the skill, the staff specifically is what I'm referring.
Well, I think it comes down to a matter of philosophy and how you approach your job, not only as a town administrator, but a manager of any organization of business. And that's really, to use sort of an analogy, and you may have heard it before, is really the town administrator is the conductor of an orchestra or a symphony or a band, and you have all these different people who have different specialties and play different instruments, and it's really their job to coordinate them. I don't know what the appropriate gun is for your police department to have, or the exact application of road salt to sand when it's snowing outside. That's the job of your department head. I think the role of the administrator is to help those folks be a better manager, a better administrator, help them think out of the box, stay within budget, or support their need to have more money or more staff based on valid evaluation and cost benefit analysis. So I see my role really with other staff as a coach and someone that can help them do a better job in their subject expertise, whereas the manager on your behalf is really a jack-of-all-trades that can ask the right questions, make sure that before it comes to the board, all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and the risks and assets of each thing are properly vetted.
One last question, in that same vein, I mean, obviously, the economy's very tight. You've been in a situation with Springfield where you've had to address issues probably sooner than most communities in small towns. But how do you go about upholding the morale, if you will, of the staff, the employees, so to speak, given those times? Certainly, you've dealt with it in Springfield. Now, assuming you were the applicant for town administrator, how would you go about maintaining it, given the tight economy that we have with potential, you hear surrounding communities, and I'm not suggesting it with our town, but layoffs and furloughs and things along that line? How do you, if you were to be the TA, go about approaching that?
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's a very difficult question, and I really don't know if there's any easy answer, correct answer. And I think really, the bottom line is to be honest and tell what you know as soon as you know it. And even if it's not pleasant, I think the angst and anxiety that people experience not knowing, or thinking that they hear something that might not be correct, or is just floated as an idea and really is dismissed rather quickly, is really, I think, you know, where things start to fall down. Most folks who work in local government know the lay of the land, because an economic, financial crisis happens in the Commonwealth about, it used to happen about every eight or nine years, now it's happening every six or seven. So I think you have to engage in regular and frequent communication. You have to invite the unions in to tell them what you know about the financial situation and what your projections are, recognizing that it's a snapshot in time. You have to say you don't know if you don't know, but I think communication is the key. Morale is an unfortunate result of what people, you know, a decline in morale, I think, is when people don't know, and that's manifesting itself in anxiety and other things. We laid off 66 people in Springfield in March and April, and it was very, very difficult, but unlike the, I think, 350 that they did in 2003, the communication was there, the projected budget deficit was there, we put up on the website suggestions, you know, what do you see in your department that could be helpful in terms of saving money? And it was amazing, the feedback that we got and things like that. So again, it's very difficult, no matter what the circumstance, and I think just honest communication with staff all the way up the line. I had the mayor draft an email to every single employee when we knew we were going to have to lay off folks. We didn't know who they were for a long time, because he held some departments harmless, at least for FY '09, Public Safety and Education. And more people appreciate receiving that email from him that just said, "I don't know what's going to happen, this is a difficult time, I'll keep you posted, let me know, you know, how you can help or any ideas." And that's what we did.
Thank you.
Tony?
A quick question. The last interview, we kind of went into details about finance. You have a very strong financial background, obviously, you're the deputy of the Financial Control Board. When you get a new job, you're always, you have this energy and this ability, or this want to succeed. And my question to you is, what one or two things have you learned over the past 20-something years that are going to be one of the first couple of things you come in here and make sure that we're doing, in terms of financial controls? You know, you went, you were TA at one of these other towns, and you said, "Oh, my God, you don't have a forecaster," or, "Oh, my God, you don't have this control in place." Is there, and we may already be doing it, but what are one or two things that you've found that you've, that have really helped you out in your prior jobs in terms of financial management?
Well, a couple of things. I mean, at the outset, if, you know, I was starting tomorrow, what would I look at, aside from wanting to chat with everybody and anybody? You know, the department heads and staff and things like that, to find out what their challenges and interests are.
They're all right here.
I know. Hi. Because really, they know, you know, what they want to do, what they can't do, what they're doing that they aren't doing well enough or could do better with additional resource. I would look at your management letters for the last five years from the auditor. I would see how much you had in stabilization and what your free cash certification was. I would look at your tax rate collection and your overlay reserve. That would just be for starters. I have a lot of that from looking at your town report from 2008, but those are, you know, I would look at monthly budget to revenue to, I mean, budget to expense for each budget and see departmental turnbacks and things like that. So that's the first part of your question. The second part, in terms of the long-term thing, would be a lot of what you said you have in place already. Capital planning committee, you have a financial forecasting committee. I would be particularly interested to see what financial policies you have in terms of use of the stabilization, use of capital, the policies around the funding of capital, debt policy, debt schedule, those kinds of things. So I could really get a handle on your financial situation. But as you noted, comparative to other communities, your community is doing fairly well in terms of the cuts, because they've sort of may have planned to sort of expect this kind of result at some point in the future. South Hadley is in the exact same situation right now, where these cuts that we're getting or anticipate getting from the legislature and the ones that we got in the 9th C, haven't been, I think, as devastating to them as other communities. They didn't lay off anyone. And Springfield, the control board went in with a $41 million deficit, and we have, we just got a Moody's upgrade again. I think we have about $85 million in reserves right now, for a $550 million budget, so it's all comparable.
Patricia, you've been TA in Long Meadow for about seven years, TA at Whately for three or four years, I think, right? And South Hadley for, you know, seven and a half years as well. So you've got, obviously, a lot of experience in town administrators, three different communities. And although you're very enthusiastic about your job, and I was impressed by your earlier words about, about, you know, long-term commitment and all that sort of stuff, and you clearly enjoy public service, and you like working at the local level, which is important to me. However, with three different towns, we all, even though we love our jobs, there's certain aspects of our jobs that we don't like. And what aspect of being a town administrator is the part that you really don't enjoy? And I don't mean to make particular comments about any individual town, but just about the whole sort of gig, because you've done it now in three different towns, perhaps your fourth town with us. What is it that you think that you want to work on in terms of improving your own capabilities as a TA, or what aspects of the job just, you know, kind of drive you nuts? And just in spirit of openness, as a professor, I absolutely hate grading papers. If I never graded another paper as long as I lived, that would be fine, but I absolutely love my job. But there's that part that just, you know, makes me want to pull my fingernails out.
Well, there's two. There's one that's personal, and I guess one that's more global. Ever since I started working in local government, I write the warrant for town meeting. So I can compose a warrant article at the drop of the hat, and like you, with 54 warrant articles or 73. That part is easy, but then when the finance committee made the change, and then the capital planning committee made a last-minute change, or the accountant said we had to revise that, and you had the motions all ready to go, and you're still, we had a representative town meeting in South Hadley, so our 150-page budget with our 20-page warrant went to every single member a month before town meeting. And so I was there collating, pasting numbers, and still wanting it to go to be copied, and still there were changes to the warrant, or the constable couldn't be found because he was in Florida. So, and that was okay for the annual town meeting, we sort of all took a sigh and did it, but then we'd have a special town meeting, or unexpected town meeting. So, so like grading papers, that was what I thought is the warrant, but it saved the town a lot of money on legal expense, because I was doing it. The other, and this is a professional pet peeve I have, is, and I don't want to generalize too much, but I care very much about what I do, and the people that work for a community or the communities I served and the staff care very much about what they do. And I think many people are sort of of the inference of the mentality that anybody who works in town hall got their job because they knew someone that worked there, and if they ever wanted to really do anything meaningful with their life, they would be someplace else. And that's what I have a really particularly difficult time with. I went to school to learn how to do this, and that's the difference, I think, from being selected versus elected. And my interest in local government has always been to serve the elected person, because I wanted to be the person behind the scenes to make sure, you know, policy and stuff was really being based on informed decision-making and well-researched things. And I don't think staff in the era of post-two-and-a-half, and citizens in general, to the extent they should, realize that town employees, municipal employees, really have to be qualified now. They really have to have a skill set, and also an innate desire of customer service, I think, that, you know, maybe you could phone it in 20 years ago, but you can't do that now. You need to have skills, there's usually not enough people in the staff, two-person offices, three-person offices, multitasking, so you need talented people. And I think we do disservice when we realize that, you know, there's just not a bunch of people whose uncle was on the planning board, and that's how they got their job.
We discussed some of this, you know, earlier, but I just kind of want to explore it again, because it picks up on what you just articulated. We are in public service, either elected or selected, and how do you go about constructing a welcoming attitude and maintaining a welcoming attitude in town hall to the citizens? I mean, you spoke about the 3-1-1, tracking citizen requests earlier, and that's a mechanical thing, and I'd be very interested in you elaborating on that and other mechanical things that you do, but also more sort of philosophically, given the fact that many people that come to town hall are coming there because they've got a problem with something, and so they're kind of fresh out of the gate. And some of them are well-intentioned but less informed about the realities of what they're trying to accomplish. And so how do you set up a mentality or an attitude throughout town hall to address that?
Well, I think a couple of things. One is, I think, folks need to be clear that it is a policy of the town that we embrace high customer service goals, and that we strive to be helpful, informative, and perform our service in the most professional and ethical way. That being said, unlike the retail business or the private sector, the customer isn't always right on the municipal side. If your tax bill is 31 days due and is past due, and it's 30 days in the month, it's past due, and there's really not a lot I can do to help you on that. So it is sometimes difficult, but that doesn't mean they shouldn't be treated with respect, that people who work for a community shouldn't always be cognizant of the fact that their salary is being paid by those folks. So we do a lot of training around, I have in the past, dealing with difficult customers, listening, being responsive, following up. And, you know, some of the philosophy around the customer is the most important person is true. And when I hear people say, "Yes, but it gets in the way of all my other work," you know, that's really where we have to redirect back and say, "Well, that's our function, but our purpose is to, you know, provide equality, you know, a community where people want to live here and raise their children," I think.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Rick. Closing and on, I think we had 35 minutes or so allocated, not that we're trying to limit it to 35 minutes necessarily, but there are a few housekeeping things they have to do. But there are a few housekeeping things they have to do. But if the board has any other questions, any members of the board, please feel free to continue with the, with the conversation.
I'm okay.
If not, again, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
It was great seeing you again and thank you for being so open. Just a couple of things I want to finish up on if I can. And it's very important, although it's not the most pleasant thing to talk about. The salary, I know you're somewhat familiar with the general area of our salary range. And knowing what you know, you, you can live with that, that's in the ballpark. There'll be some negotiations, of course, with whoever is chosen. And we'll try to draw, draw up a, some sort of a contract for the individual to look at and make sure everyone's on the same page. But the salary that's offered now is acceptable to you, give or take?
And I don't mean any disrespect, but I'd be happy to have that discussion if I'm offered the position.
Absolutely.
An open session at this time, I think it would be premature for any of us to get into detail.
That's fine. Further questions? We have Kim's email address. I'll give it to you. Maybe you could email her with the two or three references that we might want to check. We're going to ask this of all the candidates.
Are there any particular communities or work that you want the references from? I can just...
Whether you feel comfortable. I would say to the board, give them that.
Yeah. Why don't we try and get more than two or three?
How many?
Want to get one for each of us?
Five.
Four, five?
Four, five? That's fun.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any questions for us?
Wasn't too bad, was it?
Any questions for us?
Are they still looking around July?
Around July. As we get into June, that month that we were looking for a lead time goes further into July a little bit, but...
With Tricia's situation, you know, she has to find a, a home or something like that, she's going to have a little...
Let me speak to that. I spoke with Rick about, I spoke with Rick yesterday, actually, and about the position. And I, I should share with you, I was in Pittsfield having breakfast last Friday and I was reading the town report way the heck of the other, and, and some man came up to me, staring at me the whole time, and he said, "Do you live in Situate?" And I was like, "No, I've applied for a job there." And he said, "Oh, I love Situate." And I used to work there, I used to ride my bike, and I thought, "Well, there's a sign." And I'm in Pittsfield and somebody said, "Oh, Situate's a great place." I have family in the area. My brother lives here, my sister-in-law. So there's no impediment for me to start, at least on a part-time basis. So my lodging or where my head goes at night shouldn't really be any concern to the board because I have a place to stay till I find someone. So thank you for your concern, but it's really not an issue.
So you have family that lives in Situate?
Not in Situate, but in, on the south shore, so less than an hour.
Yeah, okay.
So on that, and my brother and I used to get along, so I think we're still...
Wait till you're living with him again.
He's a bachelor, so I'm good there. I wouldn't be taking the kids' bedroom or anything like that.
Great. Thank you again so much for coming in.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tricia. It was nice to see you again.
Thank you for seeing you. I can't do something above that, I'm going to melt. Take a two-second break. I wonder if we could leave those doors open? I know it's...
Wish those mics back a little, too, we'd get comfortable.
I think...
It seems like the previous person might have been slightly taller.
Thank you for coming in. We're going to let the, a cable guru tell us that that air conditioner is too loud for the sound.
No, we're okay.
We're okay. So it did get a little warm in here during the last half hour, so we'll try to keep that on. Again, welcome, welcome back to Situate. We certainly appreciate the fact that you were able to make it back tonight. And congratulations on making it to the, to the, to the finals. As I said earlier, we had a very, very great bunch of applicants and it's a credit to the people who, who were here tonight to finish where they finished. What I'm going to do is that we did an preliminary interviews, asked you to say a few words about yourself, more or less what brought you here tonight. Not so much for ourselves because you were kind enough to share that with us last time, but the people here tonight and, and the cable TV audience. So following that, we'll ask a few questions and that should be it. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate it. My name is Andrew Mailer, 46 years old and married, father of three daughters, school-aged daughters. By next September, two of those daughters will be in high school, which is great. I think I'm looking forward to the day they drive, but I haven't quite determined if that's the case or not. I guess I'll figure that out in a couple of years or so. I want to thank you folks for inviting me back. I know that the process is, is difficult and difficult really for two reasons. One is to find the person you think has the qualifications to do the job, which my guess is there, there's certainly more than one, more than myself, but then try to match that up with what the town needs and, and do that all in the context of replacing someone who has a remarkable tenure in a community. I, I don't ever expect that I'll be on a Board of Selectment, I think. I'm not sure that that's an aspiration of mine, certainly. But I would expect making that decision and hoping that you're not back in this room one, two, or three years from now is one of those things that are, you know, weighs heavy on making this decision. So I'd like to talk about that a little bit. I don't apply for jobs lightly. I certainly haven't applied for this job lightly. It's important. What brings me to Situate was a decision to evaluate the community and decide whether it made sense for me, just like you have to make your decision of whether it makes sense for you. I have to make that same decision myself. The stability in Situate, the tenure and the life of the charter, I think the charter was passed approximately 33 years ago, and certainly the tenure of Mr. Agnew meant a lot to me in terms of applying for the position. Certainly having driven around, driven around the community over the last couple of weeks, took off last Friday to drive down here during my sort of normal commute time, understand what that's like, spending some time with my family, talking to my wife about it, and really evaluating what is the benefit of Situate, which is a stable community with a commitment in its own resources, both natural and human resources, and a place that people reflect on in a very positive way. That's what brings me to Situate, an opportunity to take what I know, my experiences, and apply it in a place that I know is committed to be a great place to live, that values quality of life, and it sees itself as a stable and forward-looking community. So that's, that's what brings me here tonight.
Thank you very, very well. The question that was asked in, in the earlier interviews of you and other candidates in Situate is somewhat of an isolated community when it comes to commuting. You live on the, I wouldn't, I guess the North Shore for, in all honesty, it's a bit of a commute. There's no question about that. And it is somewhat of a concern to me. How would you handle? Have you, I know you've commuted, you say you did it last Friday, that's great. What have you found? Is it a doable, doable commute, I guess?
What I committed to the board in the preliminary interview, the short answer is yes. What I committed to the board in the preliminary interview is that I'm not going to either place you or I in a spot where I'm going to take a position or be offered a position that I don't feel I can get to. This is not a nine-to-five job, nor is it an 8:30 to 4:30 job. There's requirements in this position that don't exist in others, and quite frankly, there's a lot of professional people who work in this community, their jobs are not nine-to-five as well. Commute is one factor to be considered relative to the position. I'm comfortable and committed, I can get here and spend the appropriate amount of time here, which is certainly beyond the regular workday. I understand there are public events. It's commonplace for me during snow emergencies to understand what's happening in a community, drive along beside, you know, with those people in, for instance, in snow removal operations so that I understand what's happening in the community. It's common for me during other natural disasters, as an example, certainly water disasters, having worked in a community that's along the Atlantic Ocean, sometimes those storms creep up, to understand what's happening in that. When I make an investment to work in a place, it's an investment. It's not, it's not here to just show up to town hall when it's open and leave when it's closed. And, and quite frankly, regardless of the commute, which, which has timed up pretty regularly, about 55 minutes today, a little longer than with the traffic, but this isn't my commute today normally. I am perfectly comfortable that I can do the requirements of this job, make the commute. And again, if I didn't sit across my wife and, and get her opinion as well and get the commitment that she understands what that all means and what it means to our family, I would not be here.
Thank you. To the board, anyone want to start off with?
Andrew, Joe, or some, Joe contacted you to say you were going to be a finalist and did you tell this, you know, people at Swampscot and, and how did they take that? Being in that position once before was quite a shock. And I just, you know, you're one of our finalists and they're going, you know, there'll be big shoes to fill if you, if you leave there, I'm sure. So what was their reaction, if you don't mind me asking?
Yeah, I think to put things in context, and I, and I certainly mentioned this in the first interview, I'm in my seventh year in Swampscot. I'm the first town administrator in Swampscot. I was offered a five-year extension back a little over two years ago. At that time, I indicated that I didn't want the five-year extension, I didn't mean that in any disrespectful fashion. I think the Swampscot experience has been great. Felt that being the first person in the door, a lot of how I was viewed as being that first person as a change agent, really saw myself as a person with more experiences than that. And so I communicated very openly with my board at the time that instead I'd prefer a two-year extension so that nearing the end of that, I could start to explore other opportunities. They've been aware, if I've applied for a position, I communicate with them first, my wife first, the Board of Selectmen second, typically in that order. They're aware of it. I apprise them of the status of that. They're certainly aware that I'm here this evening. From their perspective, I certainly think that they would be disappointed, but they're, they're aware of my circumstance. I'm fortunate enough to have a current contract. I haven't asked for a renewal. They've approached me about three and five-year extensions, did so again this week. And again, I think what's important is that the dialogue between a Board of Selectmen and a community and a town administrator be open and honest. And what I've said to them is, I can sign a three-year contract and then to go decide to leave a year from now, but that's not an honest dialogue with the Board of Selectmen. So I've indicated to them that I continue to look at opportunities. I've told them that if I'm fortunate enough to be offered the Situate position, I want to accept the Situate position. And they recognize what's ahead of them in terms of a search process, but they also appreciate the candor I've had with them.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback on that for one second?
Absolutely.
Can you just elaborate on why do you, what's happening in Swampscot that makes you want to leave?
Yes, Swampscot is a good job experience, and I certainly don't leave the impression that it's not. I think from my perspective, I feel like I'm in the middle of my career having a whole bunch of experiences that I want to apply in a place that's sort of at the same point that I am. Sometimes when you take a position, certainly as the first person in the door, there's a lot of change. It was a 51, 49 vote, 52, 48 vote to change the charter. There was a lot of systemic change that needed to, to happen upon my arrival. Some really interesting things that were learning experiences, rebuilding of relationships that folks saw as broken trust when they went from elected positions to appointed positions. And I feel certain, I've always said that I believe the person needs to fit the community and the position at the time it happens. I believe to a certain extent I'm still viewed as that change person, even though I'm not, even though I've built those bridges and built those relationships, because I was the first person in the door. I think it's the right thing for Swampscot and the right thing for me to have another person sit in that seat. I'm confident enough that they will find a very qualified person and I'm confident enough in my own skills, I'll find what makes sense for me. The stability here, the long tenure of Mr. Agnew, the length and age of the charter, the fact that it's sort of been vetted through, you know what you expect, you know what you're looking for in terms of a community, that makes a lot of sense to me. And from my perspective, for Swampscot, having someone come in who won't be the first anymore, they'll be continuing on the legacy of, that's, that's happened in Swampscot in the last seven years.
You've, you've mentioned the charter a couple of times.
Sure.
Can you tell me what you feel is the strength of our charter and where it differs from the one in Swampscot? Or what, what attracts you to ours as opposed to?
Well, charters are remarkably personal documents. There certainly isn't a standard, you know, Massachusetts is a parochial place, so we, we certainly take that to heart in local communities. You know, strength here is that there's a fair amount of, a reasonable amount of authority within the town administrator position, meaning obligation from the appointment perspective, not the accountant, not the treasurer-collector, but certainly from some of the other appointment, you know, setups. That doesn't exist in every charter. As an example, certainly there's a 15-day sort of refusal or overturn period, but overall the involvement from that regard, from the capital improvements perspective, the involvement of many of the department heads along with the town administrator, the capital improvements function. So a lot of those administrative or operational pieces provide the tools to the town administrator to effectively do their job. Doesn't mean it dismisses the relationship with the Board of Selectmen at all, but I think that's a strength of your charter. And again, the length and tenure of your charter. We passed the charter in Swampscot seven years ago. That's somewhere in the vicinity of 26, 27 years later than Situate did. And, and charters have the tendency to sort of evolve in terms of how they're applied. So I think that that's a strength. The differences are actually not, there are not that many dramatic differences. I talked in the preliminary interview that the budget that gets submitted to the Board of Selectmen by the town administrator in Swampscot includes school funding and then goes through the process of finance committee, what you call the advisory committee, and sort of travels down that road. So there's some similarities that way. In terms of appointments, the Selectmen can appoint anyone I don't recommend, but there is no direct appointment of the Board of Selectmen like you have the treasurer-collector or the accountant. So I don't make the appointment and wait for a refusal, I have to make a recommendation and the Selectmen have to support that. Not unlike, I think the history has been here from, at least best I can tell, the Selectmen typically, you know, we, we have a dialogue about that. I understand where the Selectmen stand, and so those appointments are, have universally been supported. So there's a lot of similarities and some, and some subtle differences, quite frankly, like the appointment of the treasurer-collector and the accountant.
I think, what do you find, and you may have touched on this, and I always, you know, the greatest amount of sympathy, I guess, for the first town administrator in any, any town. It's, you're going to a town and dealing with people who are, are used to doing things, it's completely different. And here, now we have a, a boss or someone in charge. What were the problems that you found in, in Swampscot, being the first, that you don't think you would see here, for example?
Well, you, some of them sound a little mundane, but they're, I think someday they'll be the baseline for a book. It's sort of interesting stuff. And I used some of the examples in the preliminary, but let me give you a whole bunch of small ones because I think they're helpful. Entering into Swampscot, there's a, not the standard Mass Highway sign, there was a, as I, as I would go into Swampscot and, you know, at any number of times, there was this frame, say a five-by-five frame that said, "Entering Swampscot." But there was nothing in the frame. And so I would travel into Swampscot and there was nothing in the frame. And there was, and so when I was fortunate enough to be appointed, I said, "When's the sign arriving?" It clearly looked like it was going to hold some, something special because it wasn't your traditional Mass Highway sign, there was plantings around it. And they said, "Well, we're not quite sure. We've been, you know, talking about this and dealing with this and this person said they'd do it." And I said, "Well, how long has the dialogue been going on?" And they said, "Two years." And so I use as an example that sometimes a different person's view on things, someone else coming to the table and saying, "Okay, let's bring those parties that said they're going to contribute the sign or make the sign to the table, add some others to the, to the mix who may have an interest in..." Swampscot has a tremendous gateway, it's the Atlantic Ocean, not unlike the benefit you folks have here. But as you approach town hall and come into Swampscot, it is on the ocean. It's fantastic. And so this is the first thing you see, you know, the, the sign. And it's, it's interestingly symbolic, you know, quite frankly, about a lot of things happening. So couldn't get those parties together, involved the, the high school art program, and within a couple of months, we had high school students creating a wonderful tile mosaic on five-by-five size that they installed and it sits there seven years later. And it is what people stop and look at because it shows small monuments of around the community and it's a neat little feature. Second, and these are really sort of micro issues, but I think really the kind of things you deal with during the transitions. In almost each and every department, the board and commission which ran that department signed their department head to a contract. The state statute limits the amount of people that can have, that are, that can allow contracts, employment contracts in municipal government. But each and every department head got a brand-new contract with remarkable length, right? Because the, the expectation is someone's going to come in and we're just going to, you know, clear house, which, which isn't the case. I take great pride in the fact that many of the folks who, who were there when I started are there today and thrive. But it was an interesting little subtlety and I had to sort of talk them off that and talk about the fact that this, this isn't about some kind of implosion and recreation, it's about making sure there's some centralized reporting authority. Finally, give you another, two more small ones, I apologize, but they're always interesting stories to me. I gave you the one in the preliminary interview about the fact that there was signs, and not unlike Town Hall business signs here, but each and every department head and almost everybody else had a personal parking spot and sign. And although I appreciate that, parking was not that contentious in Swamscott. We didn't need the personal sign. And so what I talked to the department heads about, and others in the Selectmen were fantastic about it, they all had individual signs, was about the fact that maybe we should make the parking lot look like a sort of generic parking lot for everybody to use, because we have a post office next door, some people use that, there's a library out back. And they supported the fact that we needed to stop being somewhat proprietary about how we viewed ourselves and that we were one group. We weren't a bunch of individual groups who were in group. And finally, for whatever interesting reason, we had four different telephone systems in Town Hall. Those four could not, those four could not communicate with one another. So if you got a call in the building department, you could not transfer that call to the Board of Health. But the Board of Health had funded their system, and the building department had funded their system, and they just didn't talk before they purchased the systems and they couldn't communicate. So we had a lot of communication that was, "Can you please call this other number?" And a huge emphasis of mine is relationships, partnerships, and communication. And you cannot communicate if you can't simply transfer the call to someone else. And so it required a capital investment, it required a town meeting to support it. It was not hugely expensive, but we, within several months approaching a town meeting, got a single phone system where people can communicate, believe it or not, police and fire can now communicate, the three-digit dialing to the other town departments as well, so we're not occupying outside lines. And so it was, it was all those little things that made a really great place, less than perfectly functional, because you're always bumping into one another.
One question before I, while I think of it, I guess. Like every town, there's a, there's a school system, a school apartment, town side of government. We pride ourselves here in Situate for having been able to work very well together. We, there's some bumps in the road as it goes along, as I'm sure every town, but we are very, very conscious on our side of the concerns and the problems that the school department faces, mostly financially with their budgets. How important is that to you? And what, and what can you say about your thoughts on town-school relationships, if I can put it that way?
You know, it's, it's always amazing, I spent the first third of my career in the private sector, so as I entered the public sector, I'm in a situation where there was not great relationships, school and town. I never really understood that. It, you know, it's, it's our budget, it's our budget. It's not, you know, it's the town of Situate budget, it's the town of Situate School Department. I know that's not how it works, but, but that was sort of the nature of the dialogue. I can tell you that in the top 10 things, beyond my little stories about changes in Town Hall, of the top 10 things that I view as successes in Swamscott is, is the relationship between the Board of Selectmen, the school committee superintendent, and I. Superintendent and I speak once, twice, three times a week. He's a remarkably committed gentleman who's a fantastic superintendent. He's invested in the concept that we have to know what each other is doing, we have to partner on things, we regularly partner on any number of things. We're talking about removing a portable school structure that was added some years ago, talking about how to work together to remove that. We had conversations today. It's essential to what you do. There is no, there's not two different budgets in town, it's one budget. And ultimately, we're all sort of quasi-competing for those services and all those interests seem to clash, but if there's a, if there's a healthy relationship there, then they understand, the school department certainly understands what you have to go through, and the town administrator and the superintendent understands that as well. I do understand you're transitioning to a new superintendent, think it's a good opportunity to begin that relationship early. I believe in regular casual meetings with my superintendent, I come up, I bring him a cup of coffee, he brings me a cup of coffee, we talk about things on occasion. You know, we disagree, we certainly have our moments of disagreement, but by developing not just a professional relationship, but a relationship where he doesn't think I'm out trying to get the last couple of dollars out of his budget, he'd make sure that when we get into really difficult circumstances, we do things better than we would otherwise. Let me add one piece to this, which is Swamscott may not be Situate. That relationship, school and town, has led to a better relationship with our finance committee, your advisory committee. The fact that they, that the, that the finance committee in our case understands that we relate helps us all sit in a room and talk about the budget as a total sum rather than breaking down the budget into smaller segments. It's been really helpful.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Mailer again, welcome. What kind of experience have you had with establishing in the past, I know that you've been, past 16 years between Winthrop, Chelsea, and also Swamscott, but what kind of involvement have you had with local emergency planning committees within those towns?
In Chelsea, we had a pretty active LEPC. It was something, it was Mystic Valley LEPC, very involved, primarily driven, quite frankly, the emergency management director in Chelsea is a full-time employee, believe it or not. The situations and issues in Chelsea certainly were different. I was acting city manager at the time of 9/11. I can tell you the issues that we faced. I partnered with the mayor of the city of Boston to oppose the LNG tanker entering the Charles River. It was a contentious time. We had over 60 calls of threats of anthrax in the city of Chelsea during my time there post 9/11. The coordination of regional LEPCs, central areas for emergency dispatch were essential. So I would certainly say I had more focus during that time. The relationship on the North Shore is slightly different. It's a little more autonomous. We have good emergency communication, excuse me, coordination on a health department level where they've developed real plans for how to address emergency issues. We certainly work with NEMLEC and those agencies to make sure that we communicate well. There's an aggressive discussion on the North Shore about a regional emergency communication center that will also work as a, not only a dispatch area, but an emergency communication backup area, really compelled by the explosion in Danvers a couple of years ago, where Danvers, which has a very sophisticated and positive dispatch, was overwhelmed by the number of calls that came up at the explosion in Danvers. So emergency communication is important to me, support regionally is essential, our ability to communicate. It still stuns me, quite frankly, that we don't have interoperability at a level that we really should, our ability to communicate. UHF, the VHF is not what it should be statewide, and I think the state is making a commitment to that within 911 charging telephone bills by focusing on interoperability, but it isn't quite yet what you and I would want in the case of an emergency. So I've had a pretty substantial experience in that.
What about with, like, capital buildings or buildings of fuel, structures? And in particular, I draw your attention to like whether it's a Town Hall or whether it's a school or, or for that matter, a senior center. What kind of experience have you had in the past 16 years?
I've served on the school building committee of the town of Swamscott. We built a high school, the first new school building in nearly 40 years in the town of Swamscott. The creative part of that, with a whole bunch of really creative people sitting in a room, we decided to add to the back of the Swamscott High School a brand-new senior center. We combined a senior center and a high school, first time it's happened, as we're aware of it, in the nation. That's been a remarkable partnership. Seniors have their own segregated space, can leave a joint area when school's not in session, use walking tracks and, and other resources that are available in a really magnificent high school structure. Served on the school building committee with that project for years. We've just completed an historic reconstruction and expansion of Town Hall in Swamscott. Funded, the design was funded by Mass Historical Commission. We have a significant amount of historical structures in Swamscott. They're important to what we do, they're the essence of who Swamscott is, quite frankly. I certainly would tell you that Swamscott Town Hall is today one of the top 10% of facilities. It is a former, it was the house of one of the co-discoverers of electricity, and not only today functions as his former home and historical monument, it functions as an operable Town Hall, which is sort of neat. I served as a director overseeing the tail end of the Chelsea Schools project, which is at the time, the largest investment the state had made in public schools. They built every new school in Chelsea. Every school was either taken down, sold, and replaced with a brand-new facility post-receivership at the tail end of the project during my time as deputy city manager. I served as the project manager overseeing those projects. In total, I've been involved with nearly a half a billion dollars in public construction projects and, which I find really interesting, by the way. I love public constru, I don't like the bidding process necessarily. I don't like how it's limited and I think some ways costs the community too much money, but in terms of watching something grow from nothing, from nothing, I think it's substantial. Finally, the current talk recommended and supported by me is to begin the design phase for a new police station in Swamscott. I'm not sure ultimately we'll get the full funding for that, it'll be about $7 million, but it is, it is the last substantial structure that needs investment in in Swamscott.
How do you, just transitioning over to your management style, how do you go about dealing with potential strong personalities for department heads and trying to coordinate and trying to, you know, approach those issues as a, as a town manager or a town administrator? Correct me.
Fine. Duly noted. You know, I wish I could tell you this one sort of magic or road answer. In the end of the day, you have to understand that everybody is different. There are some folks who will not come to you with issues that maybe they should, and there are some folks who will come to you with issues that maybe they shouldn't. And every person's different. Part of the challenge of every town administrator is understanding that all you are different and my relationships with you will be different. Maybe not from an inequity point of view, but everybody communicates differently. So you have to be flexible enough to understand that the way everybody approaches their own work life and their relationship with one another is different. That being said, meeting regularly with department heads and staff is important because that's when you can see some of the interrelationships. Sometimes there can be a fundamental flaw in my business that we stay in our room and we think everything is working below us because we see work product. And what's brewing underneath is that maybe inter-departmentally, there's not great relationships and it's impeding things from happening properly. Let's say a building inspector's not communicating well with an assistant assessor, we're not getting the building department data into the assessing office to establish new growth. We don't know that much. If we're sitting, sitting too high up, not paying attention to what's happening, not communicating on a daily basis with those departments, we miss some of those things which are important. As I've expressed in the past, I'm visible, I go into departments, I certainly don't micromanage, I talk to them, I ask what's happening, anything happened today, any issues going on, I think I can help with. I think by establishing those individual one-on-one relationships, it helps me understand when there are differences between departments or when there's maybe an issue brewing between what I may have said and how they interpreted. So communication is essential and not just every other week at a department head's meeting, but visiting departments. And I do that on a very regular basis to make sure I understand the issues that are out there.
Building off that, if, you know, given the current economic situation, and as I, as you know, I mean, there's some towns who are laying off in the furloughs, and I'm not sure exactly what Swamscott's doing, but how do you go about addressing the morale? I mean, we've got obviously employees who are probably thinking, "What's going to happen next?" I mean, you're coming in, assuming you're the person, whoever's going to be the next town administrator is going to come into a very tight fiscal situation, and presumably it's going to get bleaker than it's, before it gets better. How do you deal with the morale for the employees?
Yeah, it's a great question. First of all, I know that all your contracts I think are due to expire this June 30th, so there's that sort of interesting play of unions deciding whether or not they really want to be at the table right now, and management deciding if they want to be at the table with unions. It's a fairly complex time. I certainly would say to you that one thing, this is, it's related, but probably not direct to your question. This is the most difficult time to deal with employee morale, period, that I have experienced in, you know, quarter-century worth of work and certainly 16 years in municipal government. Because between what we see in terms of the financial constraints, combined with the general tone of not just talk radio, but general the media on issues of, you know, whether or not municipal employees or state employees are doing what they're supposed to because of fiscal constraints, there certainly is a feeling amongst employees that they are the ones being focused on. It's a reassurance thing, and it doesn't always work. The reality is that I support the employees that work for us and for the town. I support, it doesn't mean that everything, every action they take, I support, but they have to know that the position of town administrator is managing what they do, but they enjoy the support of that position as well. And, and it's not always enough. It's not always enough to get through contentious negotiations to enjoy the support, but you've got to repeat it, you've got to compliment when things go well. You can't always sort of, it's a little bit carrot and stick, can't always be, geez, you didn't do this well today, and not bring up the fact that maybe things went well on another front. So they need to receive the reassurance that they know that I support what they do, I'm an advocate for municipal workers, I think they do a good job, I think often that they get criticized for things that are not what they should get criticized for. At the same time, we have expectations and goals, and you need to remember to compliment when things go well, because there are times when you need to criticize when they don't.
One last question, I got to take another bite at this apple. I know you talked about the travel and the distance, and I know that you'd mentioned about 55 minutes coming down, but I kind of envision the November day or the December, January, February day where it's dark outside, commute's a nightmare, all the routes are backed up because of accidents, and you're coming down, which I think could be a very long commute, let alone if there's a snowstorm. You know, obviously as a duty, the duties of the town administrator are trying to figure out, you know, what to do for the town. And what concerns me is that, is that commute is going to be, I know that you said that you'd commit, you wouldn't have applied at this situation, but that's one of the major holdups I have, is that that's a long commute. The last thing I'd like to see is a situation where, you know, given the family and obviously you're going to be sacrificing, I assume, I would, I think any town administrator's going to be commuting that long, is going to be making sacrifices for the benefit of the town because that's the position of the job, given the distance. And, you know, in all fairness, are you prepared then to say that that's the sacrifice that you're prepared to make for this town?
Yes. But let me add to that. If I didn't give you the answer upfront, I would feel like I'm sort of, this evening...
I'm not saying you're obfuscating, I'm not saying you're circum, I'm just saying that, you know, it's being asked because it's a, it's a major drive. And I'm like, if I had the snow and the travel and the backup and the accidents, I mean, maybe the first week I'd say, "Fine," and it goes away, but then after like three or four months of it, I'd finally say, "You know what? It's nice, Situate's a beautiful town, but you know, I've got my family up here, and you know what, it's just, it's just, it's wearing me down, given, given my commitments to what I've said I was going to do." And that's what I'm concerned about.
And I think I know...
I think we all are, but I'm just saying it's obviously a raised issue.
And I certainly appreciate that. I can't, I can't give you information that makes that go away. And I know that because we've had this discussion and it's clear I can't, right? But what I can say to you is, like every other professional job, there is a commitment requirement. I talked to someone today who happens to work in Beverly, Massachusetts and travels from Randolph. That's a much more difficult commute than I. Happened to talk to the town administrator in Duxbury, who travels a heck of a long, more distance than I to get to Duxbury every day. And that is a sacrifice, but it's a sacrifice that I've chosen to make. And all I can say to you is this, this is not an interim step for me. There are no guarantees in life. You can pick any one of the four people before you, and just for the sake of saying it, any one of those or the one you select may say, "I'm moving to Situate tomorrow." And you feel really good and you select that candidate, and that's your choice. In the end of the day, it does not guarantee that person will be here next year or the year after. We all make sacrifices to do what we need to do. I appreciate the fact that you see my sacrifices as different, but that's, those are sacrifices that I've chosen to make, and I would not be here if I wasn't willing to make those sacrifices. And I'm not taking this position as a trial, as a way of saying one year from now, boy, this was not, you know, I would be more than happy to provide you with either my call-outs for sec, of which there's none in 24 years, or my track record relative to what happens to me during snowmobile, you know, operations or, you know, times of inclement weather, of which we know those arise when we don't expect them to. I drive a car that consumes way too much gas so that I can get where I need to be, when I need to be there. And that requires sacrifice. But the same, in some ways, and you may see it as different, is the sacrifice when after eight years I left the private sector when I may never appear in the paper. And for 16 years, my name has. And I'm not sure which one's worse, quite frankly. I think it's a little bit of a challenge. I personally, if you could trade me, the commute that I have to take this job with the ability not to have my name appear in the paper, I'll take the latter, hands down, even if some of that stuff is good stuff. It's one of those things I don't get used to. I am not taking this job as a transition. I will do the job. Does it guarantee I will be here for 18 years? It does not, but no one can make that promise. And if they do, quite frankly, they're not being honest with you. I'm making the commitment that this job will not be altered by the length of my career, commute, will not be changed, my decision to go somewhere else, if it's 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, or 64 is 18 years from now, will be based on decisions that are other decisions in my life, but not based on the fact that I decided to take a position which complicated my life. I'm here, it's already complicating my life in the sense that I've made that decision. And that's, that's the best way I can articulate it to you. And I understand your concern, and if I'm in your spot, I understand the concern as well, but I'm hoping you look at who I am this wide and not just on that issue.
Sean, Rick, if there's anything else.
Yeah.
Rick?
Yeah. When you were last here, primarily through questioning from the other folks, there's a lot of discussion about the finances and nuts and bolts and all that sort of stuff. But different than that, from your perspective as a town administrator and taking a look at where the state is right now, how long do you think we're going to be in tough financial straits? What are some of the things you are going to want to be keeping an eye on in terms of state aid? How do you plan on dealing with that in the, in the future? And primarily, you know, GM went belly-up today, and all this sort of stuff.
Everybody said that was good news, I was trying to catch the-
Yeah, try to find that one, yeah.
Maybe it was the stock market bump that happened with it. You know, it's, it's, boy, that's, as I talk a lot, that's probably, I could give you an hour answer, but I won't, I'll try to limit the answer to about a minute and a half. I don't expect that the state, the state has been unable to find bottom on their own revenue stream, and I expect that to continue for some length of time. That's part of the problem, really, the unrest. This has been the most unusual, I guess I'm being somewhat complimentary, budgetary season that our state legislature's ever had to experience, and that is because they don't all agree about the revenue estimate, and that's, in essence, what drives the budget.
Right.
Budgets are revenue-driven, municipal governments are revenue-driven, you only can spend up to what you have in terms of revenue, the expenditures are typically fairly tight. So, they continue to struggle with what they believe is the appropriate revenue estimate. If you understand some stuff about, some stuff, that sounds really great, if you understand some things about capital gain tax, you recognize there's a trailing factor to that. If you had losses, you don't, those losses, you can write off those losses for subsequent years. It tells me a little bit that, from a state tax perspective, especially on the capital gain side, the state's going to suffer to that to at least 2014. That's my, that's my take on it. I think 2014, if we see some kind of bump or leveling of where we are in revenues, I think that that would be reasonable, I think it could be longer than that, but I think that that's a reasonable estimate. That means we need to continue to expect that the state will put more obligation on municipalities. Some of that has translated, for the first time ever, in municipalities, it looks like the municipality's given some tools to do things on their own. I'm a big advocate for the concept of home rule in Massachusetts, because technically we're a home-rule state. We are not a home-rule state. Technically, we're a home-rule state, and that's how we're identified, when others view Massachusetts. There's very little home rule in individual communities. And so, you've seen, I testified before the legislature about two, two-and-a-half weeks ago, on the municipal relief package, of which some of it includes, for the first time in a while, this discussion of some autonomy at a municipal level. I'm not so sure I support everything they're proposing, but it is the beginning of a dialogue where Situate gets to make decisions about Situate, and it's not the state making decisions about every community, because we're not one-size-fits-all. Every community has different issues, different concerns, different costs. You know, place a charter school in a community near Situate, and the dollars migrate out. Well, that's a different issue that may be, from a region that doesn't have a charter school, as an example. So, I think one of the things we must, and I continue to advocate for, is the autonomy to make decisions at a local level. Let the boards of selectmen, school committees, town meeting members have a share and a stake in making things better, because in the short term, we're not getting more money. We're just not. As it relates to what's going to happen in Situate and other places because of that, we can, we are obligated to estimate revenue at the most conservative levels, not at the most wishful levels. The governor's budget, with no disrespect to the governor, that included a seals and mail tax, I would not have included those estimates when I first built the budget, which I did not. When the House came out and added two-hundred-and-twenty to two-hundred-and-fifty million, based on the sales tax, to their first House budget, didn't include that extra amount of money, because it looked like there was some dispute. So, our obligation is to be fiduciaries to taxpayers, and fiduciaries to residents, town meeting members, and being honest with our employees. This is what the numbers look like. Let's not make it, let's make it real, let's make everybody aware of what the concerns are. It's remarkable how people actually understand what's happening. People read the paper, people know what's happening. The unemployment rate in Massachusetts is at levels which we haven't seen in a while, people understand it. So, our goal must be to be honest about who we are, not overestimate, and really be protective of our bond rating. Don't do things that the bond rating agencies would see as leaps of faith. If we do those things, then generally, you know, we're going to suffer through some difficulty and pain, but my concern, as I mentioned to the legislature, was, if you view what we're currently experiencing as only a problem that lasts till 2014, then you will not make the change that helps municipalities. If Situate, whether I'm here or not, and I hope to be, makes decisions that only gets us to 2014, without looking at 2020, then we will come out of 2014 feeling sort of good for ourselves for about a year, and realize that we haven't built the future, because we need to sustain ourselves with a difficult time, and be ready to experience, not growth, but certainly be able to come out of that in a positive way. So, the more conservative we can be through fourteen, in my opinion, the better positioned any community is to make sure that they get to 2020, not limping there, but really making progress.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Nice, thank you, thank you very much for coming in. The process, I think, from here on, I have a sheet that Kim Donovan put out. If you'd be kind enough to maybe email five references to her tomorrow, not that we're going to check them, we're probably, I don't know that we haven't really talked about it, but I don't think we're going to probably check until we get down to the finals, you know, but we'd really appreciate that. Our plan would be to digest this information, digest tonight for a day or two, probably vote next Tuesday night, we have a scheduled meeting, at which time our decision would become clear, hopefully, and then notify the candidate. We still have the hopes of bringing someone on board, on or about, if I said July 1st last time we met, it's probably July 7th now, but in that area. So, that would, obviously, you know, after we contacted, the choice would work out some sort of a contract that would be agreeable to both them and us. So, that's basically the schedule going forward.
Well, I appreciate your time again. Hopefully, hopefully, I've expressed a little bit about who I am, and why the position's important to me, and I hope a week from Tuesday, you're giving me good news.
Well, as I said before you came, before we started this whole process, we all consider ourselves very fortunate to have the four people coming before us tonight that we have coming.
Should I grab that for me now?
Grab that right now, take it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will take a quick, two, two or three-minute break. We're really fortunate in having the four candidates back that we have tonight, and what we're going to do, similar to what we did in the prior interview, we're going to ask you to just give us five or six minutes of what brings you to Situate tonight, what went through your decision-making process to get here, and then we'll follow with some questions, and see where it goes. So, it's really informal, and go ahead.
That sounds great.
Introduce yourself. Thank you for coming.
And thank you again for having me, I truly appreciate it. Excuse me, I actually live in Ducksbury, just a few miles down the road. I'm familiar with Situate mostly through my wife's family, who live here. Been coming here for the last fifteen years, particularly on the 3rd of July, spending some time on the beach that evening. I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus here in town as well, and as I told you, at my first meeting with you, the best place to get a sub in this town is Maria's, and I went there two weeks ago for dinner, it was wonderful, just as always. Aside from that, for the last seven years, I've been working on the Cape. For the last three, I've been working for the town of Mashpee as the Assistant Town Manager, and prior to that, I was working in the town of Harwich. First, as the Assistant Town Administrator, followed by the Acting Town Administrator, once the Town Administrator there had left for Manchester. Prior to that, I was working for the town of Lancaster, off the 495 corridor, as the Community Development and Planning Director, where I oversaw the Conservation Department, Planning Department, Building Department, Board of Appeals, Planning Board, and the Conservation Commission. And prior to that, I was working in Vermont, where I spent four years working for the town of Williston, as their Assistant Town Planner and Zoning Administrator. And then, prior to that, I was working in Richmond, Vermont, as the Assistant Town Administrator there. All in all, that adds up to about fifteen years' experience in municipal government. The reason that I'm here in Situate is because, when I saw this job open up, I thought this was a rare opportunity. It looked like an exceptional community to come to, one that I'm familiar with, and it's right in my backyard, and it certainly seemed like the timing was perfect, I hope for you as well as for me. It looked like, I know it's perfect for me, and I just hope that you'll agree with me. So, hopefully, that's-
Thank you.
... in a nutshell. You're welcome.
I guess, and if I, with the board's, okay, I'll just start off with this question. You know, it's a step that's made all the time, but nevertheless, it's a big step. I mean, you're in competition with people who have had town administrator, town management experience, anywhere from, I guess, a dozen years to over twenty years. You're currently Assistant Town Manager in Mashpee, and doing a fine job. Could you tell the board, and tell the citizens, why you think you're ready to take on the position of the Town Manager, or Town Administrator, in a town?
Sure. It's a great question, and I understand why you would ask it. It would seem that someone who's still got the title Assistant in front of them might just be that, an Assistant. In my case, I've had rare opportunities to be more than that. Currently, I'm also serving as the Chief Financial Officer, where I oversee the Assessing, Accounting, and Treasurer/Collector departments. So, those are three direct reports that I have, in addition to the employees underneath them. When I was in Harwich, I served as the Acting Town Administrator, granted only for a three-month period, but it was a period of interesting transition, in that when my previous boss left, I was left holding the bag on town meeting, and the first thing I had to do was rally the troops, and make sure that we were a cohesive unit going into town meeting, and the paper later portrayed that town meeting as one of the more smooth and successful town meetings they'd had, and they were usually a three-night marathon. In this case, I brought all the key financial departments, all the players, to the table, we figured it out, and got through it flawlessly, I thought. Also, whenever the Town Manager isn't there, or the Town Administrator isn't there, I'm the guy in charge. I'm in the big chair, making those decisions that I'm asked to make. I've done a lot of managerial work in those roles, either as the Assistant, or as the Acting Town Administrator, and the Assistant Town Manager.
See, Sean? Almost that exact same question. What, Joe said there were other finalists with a little more experience.
Yes.
What can you do? I look at you like, a younger guy. What can you do to convince us that, and the rest of us in this room, what can you do better than them? Can you put twelve miles, you know what I mean? Think of something that you can do better than them, Rainey.
There's a lot of things I'm going to do. I'm going to bring you a positive energy that, that I've prided myself on for a number of years. Every day when I come into work, I'm excited to be there, at every job I've had, and that's always been sort of the marvel of my friends, who sit there and say, "God, I can't believe how much you like going to work every day. If you like what you do, you're going to portray that, and you're going to help other people see your perspective, and hopefully like the job that they're doing as much." I'm going to try and, like I said, the positive energy, I'm going to bring fifteen years' worth of experience, working in seven different municipalities, so I've seen quite a bit at several different levels. I've worked at a lot of interesting positions, I've been the Zoning Administrator, I've been the Planner, I've been the Health Officer, I've been a Conservation Agent. I've tried to do as much as I possibly could. I've been the Treasurer/Collector twice in Mashpee, so I know how those departments work intimately, so I'm going to bring not just the administrative/managerial function, but I've actually done it from the, from the lower levels all the way up to the top. Hopefully, a well-rounded, broad spectrum for a candidate.
Just one other question, and you touched on it, it's in your resume, and you may have spoken about it the first time we met. Could you talk a little more in detail about when you were the Assistant TA in Harwich, then you went to Acting?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit more about that, and then was it your choice to get out of Harwich and go to Mashpee?
Correct.
You know, it almost seems like a natural transition.
Yeah, right. Why didn't I stay there? That's a great question.
Thank you.
Yes. Well, my boss had left, and so I was appointed the Acting Town Administrator by the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
They had full faith and confidence in me. I had thought of applying to become the Town Administrator there, but a number of factors, most notably, the opportunity in Mashpee opened up, and I had applied prior to his departure. So, I thought, "Well, I'll continue to pursue that avenue," and I did, and it was an even better opportunity for me.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just, how was it a better opportunity? If you can just keep it-
Oh, I wanted to get budgeting experience. I wanted, I wanted more experience dealing with the three key financial departments, Accounting, Assessing, Treasurer/Collection, and it gave me just that.
But if you had gotten the Town Administrator position, that would have had that also, wouldn't it?
It would have, but I liked the idea of being the CFO. It was a little closer to home, to be honest with you, also. Fifty miles a day, got to be old, one way, so I figured, well, I can reduce the commute from a hundred miles a day to sixty, and that was, that was actually a logical thing to do at that time, because gas prices were starting to climb up.
Sorry, Don, I don't-
No, just in that same vein, Mr. Reed, I look at this, and I realize, you know, you've got a nice resume, certainly not, but the concern I have is, after looking at your resume, and then saying to ourselves, "Okay, we're probably, right now, as a town and as a state, in one of the worst financial situations in recent memory," and the problem I'm looking at is, is that while you've had some experience at various levels, I mean, how is it that you think that, you know, that you're going to better serve the town of Situate, given that you haven't gone through a financial downside from a managerial standpoint? And I think that's, that's what I'm looking at, from my perspective, I'm saying, "Okay, we're in a, one of the worst times ever, and how is it that, you know, given your," I realize you'd said that you've got mixed experiences, and obviously, the youth and the excitement, and the, you know, the opportunity, but I'm saying, that in and of itself isn't going to, shall we say, manage us through it. So, I mean, if we can get a little bit more substance as to what concretely do you think, from your experience, that you're going to be able to do, to be able to steer this town, shall we say, going forward, given the size of its budget, and the deficits, and the problems that not just the town of Situate's facing, but obviously, the Commonwealth. And I'm not talking about how you're going to deal with Massachusetts, I mean, with the deficiencies that we're getting from the state, and the lack of funds from the feds, and so on and so forth.
You, I agree with you wholeheartedly. In fact, your five-year financial plan says it best, we are in uncharted waters. This is a rare opportunity for anybody coming into this position, because no one's been through it. We are seeing financial things happening, now that heaven happened since the Great Depression, and there's no one around to recall how that was actually played out, because no one's actively working in this field that was doing it at that time. Management's changed a lot in the last seventy years also. More to your point, when I was in Harwich, we were faced with override situations, they were not pleasant, they failed, we laid off employees. I have been through that, it was not easy, particularly, not just the financial aspect of it, then there's the whole morale component that comes with it. It's a rebuilding process. I know that Situate's facing a, I think about a $730,000 shortfall, if I remember correctly, if I read it correctly in the paper. We're facing 330 in Mashpee. We're all looking at that, we're wondering, what's the state going to do? What are the budget numbers going to be? How are we going to deal with this? I think that your current Town Administrator, Mr. Agnew, said it best, we're going to have to see what's going to happen, and we may have to do more cuts. We're facing the same problem in Mashpee. I was just talking with Joyce yesterday, my boss there. We're going to go on a spending freeze July 1. You know, it isn't going to be Christmas in July, the way it usually used to be, when you get your budget, and, oh, boy, we get to go run around and spend money. It isn't going to happen. We're closely monitoring our expenditures now. I mean, you gentlemen know that you're coming into the end of the, trying to close out the year. Where are we hitting our targets? We could be off by, you know, a million dollars, in some of those cases, if we don't get turnbacks. So, it's, it's, you're right, it's not just cheerleading, it's making hard, hard decisions, some of which I've had to make, at different levels and different positions. Did that answer your question?
Well, partially. Just a few other follow-ups, just kind of moving on, I mean, you kind of touched on it, I mean, how do you deal with employees, with morale? Okay, given, again, if you were to be the Town Administrator for Situate, I mean, how do you approach this issue, given that there could be cuts, there could be some kind of furloughs, there could be, you know, you know? Exactly, how do you approach it? How would you manage that situation?
The way I've done it in the past is, create an issue where it becomes an ownership concept, where if people are on board with an idea early on, they're more apt to take an active role in it, and by so becoming part owner in that concept, then they have more invested in it. For instance, if there were to be a furlough program, we had explored that in Mashpee about six months ago, one of the first things I did was figure out, if we needed to do a furlough program, one of the ways to do it would be to create a payment plan, so that people could actually pay themselves, and figure out how they could float through, let's say, the five days that they weren't going to be paid. If we could help them out by figuring out a payment plan, so that they could actually be paid for those five days off, just by storing away a little bit of money, week after week, putting it aside, so that it would make the pain a lot less. When they're brought, when you bring people to the table early on, and have them buy into a concept, generally speaking, you're going to find that morale will be there, because they have a vested interest in it.
Just on another area, have you been involved in any type of capital campaign? So, when I mean capital, I mean like, you know, structural, whether it's a town hall, or a school, or-
Yes.
Could you just expound on that?
Certainly. Right now, we're in the process of building a eight-and-a-half-million-dollar library in Mashpee. It'll be the first or second lead-certified library in the state. I've done all the procurement, from designer selection, to, right now, I'm actually doing the procurement for the book security system, the radio frequency ID system. I'm pretty well-versed in procurement. We also just finished a two-and-a-half-million-dollar fire substation in Mashpee as well. So, I've done horizontal, vertical, and all, all other aspects of procurement, from 30B to Chapter 149, 339M, all that stuff.
And have you had any experience with any local emergency planning within those committees?
Yes.
Which ones have you had, and what have you done? Which ones have you had, and what have you done?
I'm NIM-certified, that's the National Incident Management System, through the, I think the fire department ran our program. I'm one of the key contacts for hurricane preparedness, that kinda thing? Is that what you meant?
That, and I was thinking more, in the wake of the recent swine flu, and obviously the AID and the flu, I was thinking myself, you know, obviously, you know, we have certainly, through hurricanes, and we have that clearly...
We all know how to deal with that, right?
But, you know, more importantly, in the event that there was some kind of pandemic...
Yes.
You know, I hate to say that, but I'm like, it's a potential, and it's always been, and of course, more recently. So I was curious, what kind of experience have you had?
We have a children's daycare that we run, in the town of Mashpee. It's actually a town-run facility, through an enterprise fund. And we had a MRSA outbreak there, a year and a half ago. My boss happened to be on vacation at the time it happened, and I was the guy in charge, working with our health department. So we dealt with that. You might wanna ask, "How did I deal with it?" First thing we did was, put the cleaning cars right out in front of the building, because we didn't want to leave any mistake for any of the parents who had kids there, to let them know that we were dealing with it head-on, that we were cleaning the building from top to bottom, which essentially is what it all boiled down to anyways. So, it worked out very well.
Thank you.
Knock on wood.
Yeah. Rainey, you're obviously an enthusiastic guy, and that's a, that's a good thing, because there are definitely dark times in any person's job, and sometimes enthusiasm's the only thing that gets you through. As these guys have heard me say, you know, many times, "I love my job," and they see how I love my job, but there are characteristics of my job that I absolutely can't stand. And it takes all sorts of personal discipline for me to be able to do them half-assed, let alone, you know, well. You do have a fair number of experience, in terms of number of different municipalities. And I see there's a balance between the numbers of municipalities versus total number of years, and so, to me, that works out okay. But you have been exposed to a bunch of different systems, and so on. What are the common threads to being a town administrator, that you actually probably don't enjoy as much as other aspects, and that you find yourself having to discipline yourself, to saying, "Okay, Rainey, this part of the job sucks, but you gotta do it."
Stinks, rather.
Stinks, yes.
I understood. He's in the, speaking in the vernacular, I'm a fan of that myself.
Yeah.
Just not here. I've never met a town administrator, or a town manager, that liked doing department head evaluations. I concur with that statement. I don't relish them, I find them interesting, I find them to be a very useful tool, but I'll tell ya, sometimes there are just, there are those days where you sit there, in front of that computer screen, thinking, "Wow, I've gotta go back over the last year, and figure out what this person's done." So, in an effort, because I have to do department head evaluations myself, for the financial departments, in an effort to make that process easier, and perhaps more palatable, over the course of the year, I will sit down, and make sure that I keep more copious notes on those department heads, so that I can say, "Oh, okay, this was an interesting thing that he or she did. I'll remember that." And then I keep a file on that.
Yeah.
Just an electronic file.
Yeah.
So that when I get time, when it comes time, you know, a month before their due, then it's a lot easier process. If I can take the tedium out of it, I find the process to be a little more palatable.
Do you sit down with the department heads?
Oh, yeah.
How often do you do that? You know, one-on-one, in a job evaluation sense, since you mentioned it?
Oh, in an evaluation sense?
Yeah, since you mentioned it.
It's interesting, because the way I portray my relationship with my coworkers, and the department heads that I oversee, and my boss, in any of my positions, I've always considered it to be what I call a running conversation. I don't have to surprise them with a visit, nor do they surprise me. I'm a huge fan of open doors. So it isn't like, "Hey, here I am, you know, start dancing, start, start making yourself look busy." I'm not into that. I'm, I'm, I'm always kept abreast of what it is they're doing, because they're interested in letting me know. I hate surprises, and as a result, the people I work with don't care for them either, particularly the board. I can tell you one thing, if I work here, you won't be surprised by anything, because I detest them, and I never wanna see the board, or my boss, in a position where they are sitting there saying, "Gee, I didn't know that. That isn't gonna happen." I do not like that.
Okay. Thanks.
And I should follow up by saying, as such, the people that I oversee don't like surprises as well, so I'm never surprised to hear.
Yeah, right.
That's why the running conversation seems to work so well.
Yeah, goes both ways. Goes both ways, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up and down. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just a quick, a quick comment, you know, you're a finalist, you know, we go through this process, and, you know, we've already had the comments, where we talked to you about the details of what you do, and...
Yes.
And what your financial background is, and how you feel about managing people. So, you know, right now, we're really attacking areas that we think we wanna get more information out of.
Sure.
But congratulations, you're a finalist.
Thank you.
The, the one thing that's noticeable, that I think John and Sean were talking about a little bit, is Situate does not have an assistant...
Right.
...town administrator. So, so you, in coming in here, won't even have the strength of yourself, or support of yourself, coming in here. So that's part of the reason why we're trying to dig into what, you know, your ability, as I think Sean said, you're a younger candidate, we see expectations of you being here for 20 years, and...
Me too.
You know, that's, that's the strength, the question mark, as everybody has one, is, you know, "Are you ready to make that leap?" And that's, that's why we're digging here. One thing that I wanted to ask you about, and I asked it to a prior person, but a little bit different, what, what processes have you implemented now, that when you come here, you're gonna make sure that we're doing, or you're gonna implement them right away? And last time, the answer that I got was more on specifics of what I'm gonna look at, and get, but, but really, is there a process, or something that you've found, over your 15 years of experience, where you say, "You know, this was really helpful for me, in doing my job better, and I wanna make sure that they're doing it in Situate?"
Mm-hmm. There are a number of things. As we had discussed previously, one of the things that you have done here, that I am a tremendous fan of, and I'm delighted to see it actually in your charter, is your five-year financial forecasting. It is brilliant. It's a, it's a smart move, I wish more communities did it. That's one thing I'm a huge fan of. On a, on a more day-to-day, week-to-week level, in terms of the relationship with the board, I'm one who enjoys keeping folks like you informed of what's happening, whether it be through a daily email, or a weekly email, or a weekly report, just to let you know, here's what's happening. I think, I think one of the key aspects of the success for the candidate in this position, is the open flow of communication between yourselves, and whoever's sitting in the town administrator position. Is that answering your question?
A little bit, but more along the lines of, you know, I went into this job, and I found that they weren't having weekly meetings. So I found that by me meeting with my department heads, on every Tuesday, for breakfast, it really opened things up, you know?
I'm with you.
Or...
I'm with you. Thank you. Two aspects I can give you on that, and they both come from Harwich. One, I was a huge fan of either myself, or my boss, getting out in the field, and leaving the office once in a while, to actually see, what's going on at the fire department? Gee, what are the police guys doing today? How are things down at the harbor? Being an active person, out in the community, and not just at the department head buildings, but perhaps at social functions. Maybe there are things happening at the senior center, or somewhere else, where that face and that name, for the town administrator, need to be present in the community. The second thing I'd use to do in Harwich, do it also in Mashpee. In Mashpee, it's with the financial departments, but in Harwich, it was more with the harbor, and the building, construction departments, you know, the planning, health, we kept weekly meetings. Very simple, very easy. Sometimes they took 20 minutes, sometimes they took a little longer than 20 minutes, just to know what each department was doing. It was kinda nice, because you got a sense of, "Okay, here's the issue of the week, here's what we need to deal with this coming week, here's what we've been dealing over the last week." So I try to keep an active hand in things, without micromanaging. The idea is, you've hired managers that are in place, that know their jobs, that know what they're doing, so that you don't need to babysit.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Rainey, thanks you again, and congratulations for making the final call.
Thank you.
We're going to, the procedure going forward will be, hopefully, a relatively simple one. I have here a Kim Donovan's email address. I would ask you tomorrow, if you would, to email her with, say, five references, that we may or may not be calling, depending upon...
Sure.
...the way things go. We certainly won't bother people, and candidates, who aren't our choice, we're probably trying to narrow it down to the first, our actual choice.
Yep.
Calling the references. Our plans still remain pretty much the same. Would like to have someone on board during the first week in July. You have an in-ministerable government, you know how it works?
I do, indeed.
The best-laid plans sometimes go awry, but that's our plan, anyway. So I would say that, hopefully, you'll be hearing from me over the weekend...
Terrific.
Shortly after Tuesday, when we, when we vote.
I look forward to that phone call.
All right. Thank you again for coming in, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me, I truly appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Rainey.
Thank you, Rainey.
Mike, nice to see you again.
How are ya?
Goodbye, thank you.
Good to see ya, Mark.
How's it going?
Fine.
Good to see you.
See you again.
Hey, Mark, how are ya?
You're good.
Good.
I didn't get them right away.
Live on the radio?
Well, live on television, on cable.
And radio.
And the radio, right?
And the radio.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight, and congratulations, I might add, on, we had a, an outstanding, I think we all, all of us who went through the resumes, and went through the interviews, an outstanding group of candidates. Congratulations you for being here tonight, in the, shall we call it, the top four. And what we're gonna ask you to do, we have talked to you, the board has talked to you before, so some of it may seem a little redundant, and I hope it doesn't to you, but in order to bring everybody up to date, what I'd like to do is just ask you briefly, four or five minutes, tell us what brought you here tonight, why you decided, after being a town administrator in Stoughton, for the length of time you have been, to apply to Situate, and come down here and make application for this, for this position? So if you would.
That'll be very easy.
Yeah.
Reason why I applied to Situate is because you have a beautiful town. Just look at the waterfront, you look at the homes, you look at the ambiance of the community, the financials, you have a strong community, you have good, solid municipal services, you have a reputation. The previous town administrator's been here for a long number of years, you have stability, relative, you know, compared to this politics everywhere, but in Situate, you certainly seem to have political stability. You have been on the board, Mr. Norton, for over 20 years. And that's very attractive to someone like myself. For the information that, you know, people will be wanting to know, but you can't ask. I'm 51 years old, been married 27 years, I have three kids. My youngest of one is in, is in high school. And I'm not looking to job hop, I'm looking to come to a place, in a good community, and I have the experience, and I've, I think I have the skills that would serve Situate well.
Thank you. Very precise, and thank you for that. And what we're doing now, is just opening it up to the board, in no particular order, any questions that any board member might have, either a new question, or one we might have asked you before. Rick, set aside.
Last time around, we talked a lot about finances, and primarily, some of the other folks asked you some pretty detailed questions about finances. And I'm not a real financial nitty-gritty guy, myself, but I am interested in your, in your view on, given that you are a town manager currently, what your view is, long-term, about the state, state of the state, how that trickles down to the state of the towns, and the municipalities, some of the challenges you might see facing a town like Situate. I don't expect you to know, you know, huge details about what's going on right here, right now. But just from a more macroscopic point of view, and also sort of the timeframe over which you think that these budgetary challenges are gonna be particularly acute?
I think Situate, as well as other towns in the South Shore, are gonna experience some rough times for at least two to three years. This particular year, everyone's experienced cuts, they've experienced decrease in the state aid. I think that's gonna continue into 2010, certainly, only because their revenues are gonna lag behind any, any uptick in the economy. And I wouldn't see that coming for at least a couple of years, so, there's gonna be tough times ahead. And tough times are gonna mean making choices on services, on delivery, on what types of services you want to fund. Obviously, you want your core services, police, fire, public works, you want a strong education base. And then, and then you'll make decisions as to, as to what I wanna call the point of services. Are you, what particular type of service is most important to the residents, and to the board, and how do you, how do you produce that? I mean, at some point in time, with, with other communities, I know, in Stoughton, we've experienced the same thing, we've had to cut back, we've had reductions in staff, which does mean some reductions in services, but we try to prioritize those, as to what's important to, you know, to the townspeople, and to the board. So, that's what I see happening, and I, and I see that you're gonna probably need someone who's, you know, experienced that, you're gonna need someone who is going to be able to hang tough, so to speak, through the tough time. It's, it's easy to be a manager in any community, when the money's flowing, and, and times are good, and you got all the programs, and everyone's happy. It's a little tougher when, when times are tough.
Do you have any experience, or just even theoretical thoughts, about some mechanisms that may or may not save money, like regionalization, and what other sort of mechanisms do you think that might be worth exploring?
You have the typical, the, the normal things that people look at, they look at health insurance costs, which is probably a very large portion of the particular budget, you wanna look at that. Insurances, other types of insurances, then you're gonna be down to, your biggest cost is gonna be personnel. Other things that you can look at, utility, I'm not, I'm not sure whether or not you consolidate utilities, and purchase them either with the schools, in conjunction with the schools, or you purchase them regionally. There's also regional purchase groups, and where I am in the South Shore, we have a consortium that puts particular products out to bid, there's always the state bid list, that's always a place where you can try to save some money, especially for general items, police cruisers, stock items, those sort of things. And regionalization works best at that, at that particular level, I've seen, and we use it in Stoughton.
Okay. Thanks. That's it for now. Just a, a couple of quick questions, just so, and, and we went through your history in detail, but just a, a couple of questions on, on why you're leaving Stoughton, in terms of, this, you're looking for this, and your, in your current status, I think your, is your contract up in...
On June of 2010.
Right, so it is in, I mean, you've got a contract for another year.
Correct.
You kinda went while you liked the community here. What is the, someone asked a good question earlier, in terms of, people know that you're a finalist now.
Yes.
And, and what was the, the reaction, in terms of, you know, the, the people that you work closely with, and, and the board, and all that sort of?
Most would be sad to see me go, but wish me the best. And of course, there's always, there's always a group of people that are holding a champagne cork.
Right.
But I would say that that's a, that's a minority.
Right. I, I had a, another question. Has, in Stoughton, have you pursued any environmental projects, and any green-type initiatives in, in the town?
Not real green initiatives that I could think off the top of my head. I mean, most of what we've done in Stoughton was purchase land, for conservation purposes.
In Stoughton, have you pursued any environmental projects and any green type initiatives in the town?
Not real green initiatives that I could think off the top of my head. I mean, most of what we've done in Stoughton was purchased land for conservation purposes. We purchased numbers of acres of land to put in trust. And I'm going to say, the last piece that we were looking at included a pond, it was like 96 acres. So for a town its size, we probably have, I'm going to say about 250 acres in conservation. That's where they put most of their effort in, as far as those types of green initiatives. We did work with the school, with an engineering firm, to look at energy alternatives. But the only one that would work for us, we don't get enough wind turbines, only one place. It looks like solar panels would work. Geothermal, if we built new, we might be able to use them. But for existing buildings, geothermal is just too expensive to retrofit into the building. So solar looks like it's it for, you know, for Stoughton.
And I've asked this question of a few of the candidates. When you come here, what are you going to be able to take from your past jobs in terms of initiatives that you've started that you're going to want to make sure that are implemented here if we're not already doing it?
Well, I think the biggest thing that I'm going to be able to give you is communication, hopefully transparency when we make decisions. And we're going to have to build up, you know, trust and loyalty as to how we go about making the decisions and how that's projected into the public, so that they're comfortable with the decisions that they make. They know about them, there's no surprises. The biggest thing that I can do for the community is to, is risk avoidance. I mean, the biggest thing any town administrator can do is not put the town at risk. Because when you put the town at risk and things go, and you have trouble, trouble costs money. And that's something you want to avoid at all costs. I think I could bring that to you.
And how do you do that? How do you eliminate risk?
You don't, you can't eliminate risk. The only thing you can do is minimize it. And how you minimize risk is you have to have the ability to see a potential problem before it grows bigger and utilize your resources, be they staff, because you have a good professional staff, a town council, or legal services, to try to get ahead of the curve in order to nail down potential weak points before it comes to the forefront. And I would think mainly, the best examples would be if you have labor issues, if you have potential legal claims. Hot ones are like 40Bs, everyone suing everyone on 40Bs. We have some suits going on like that. So if you can put your money and your efforts up front, it usually saves you on the end.
Right, and last, just, and what, is there like a specific thing? I think you're hitting on it, I think you got on the communication piece. But what do you, as the town administrator, do with your employees or look at that allows you to do that stuff? Like, is it, I mean, I think you touched on communication. How do you communicate with them? How do you, what information are you looking for that you're going to look for here? So that that all happens is?
The first thing you look for is you look for a professional staff. Because obviously, I'm only one person. I'm only going to be able to do so much. If you have professional staff and you have professional people, they will carry the ball on most occasions. As far as getting the information from them, various methods. And you have to look at the individuals. Some people like to communicate by email, some like phones, some like face-to-face conversations. I usually have a staff meeting at least every two weeks where we sit together, all the department heads. Most of the time, it's 20 minutes or so of going over what's happening at the board level, going over the selectman's agenda. And then we open it up for what's happening in other departments. And it's a time where folks who normally don't get together and talk do get together and talk. And you'd be amazed at the amount of information that comes out for other issues that they're not even thinking about that affects them. And that has worked well for me.
Mark, I think as town administrator, every town administrator, I think makes easy decisions sometimes, some of them are easy, and some of them are very difficult. And let's zero in on, in Stoughton, I know you've had some difficult decisions to make. What would you consider your most difficult decision and what, how did you handle it? What did you do?
Well, if you knew the outcome, all decisions are easy. It's the ones where you don't know what's going to happen. Most difficult decision I had to make involved the police corruption issue in the town of Stoughton that involved the chief of police, the sergeant, and another officer that were indicted, and the chief was convicted, and so was the sergeant. Sergeant is currently incarcerated for the state correction institution. And that was very difficult because those individuals were born and raised in the town. And I was, quote, "the outsider." And it was difficult to maintain a stance to do the right thing in that particular atmosphere. And I did pay a high price personally to go through that process. It was very dramatic. Eventually, everything did go to court. And as I said, the chief was convicted of a felony for an attempted extortion. And the sergeant is incarcerated, so. But there was no guarantee he was going to come out that way, but he did.
If you look back, that is, I'm sure that was a tough decision.
That was probably one of the toughest decisions I've ever made in my career.
Yeah, I can understand that. None of them are easy, I guess, I think about it. But that ranks up there in toughness.
In that same vein, it kind of goes to two questions I have, Mark. But how is it, you know, I've kind of pitched the question as far as the financial climate. But how did you deal with the town morale with your other staff heads or department heads? I know it's obviously, there was a crisis going on. You're the town administrator for Stoughton. I mean, how is it that you handled managing the remaining departments through this crisis? And utilizing that as an analogy to the present situation? I mean, how would you go about addressing that issue with, given the financial crisis, if you're a town administrator?
Well, that's a question where you have to force communication. I mean, some folks, you actually have to drag, you know, you have to force them, order them at the staff meetings, make sure that they're there. Make sure that if you can't get through telephone, then you start having to do emails or memorandums to keep those folks informed as to what's going on. I mean, obviously, the best thing you can do is talk to them and deal with them, you know, face-to-face as individuals and mention that it's not necessary for individuals to like each other or be friends with each other in order to do a job. You know, there's a job to be done. And as long as they know what needs to be done, there's that expectation. And they follow through. To be blunt, it doesn't matter if they hate my guts or not. As long as the job gets done, that's really what matters.
The other, some questions I had was, have you had, I think your budget in Stoughton, is it around, is it 70 million, somewhere in that?
It's, we've got about 68 million general fund and about 14 million enterprise.
During your time that you've been in Stoughton, have you had to deal with any operational overrides?
No. Stoughton has never had an override. My previous town in the town of Webster, we did have a debt exclusion for a school. Most of the communities I've been in, it's been fiscally more restrictive. You had to really watch your dollars because the proposition of overrides didn't have a lot of support. So we had to watch our nickels and dimes a lot more.
In that same vein, have you had experience, obviously, I know that you've had commercial growth in Stoughton, which was on your resume. But with respect to like capital buildings and structures for the town, whether it's a town hall or a senior center or a school, what kind of experience have you had in trying to? More recent experience, I guess, is what I'm looking at.
I mean, a fair amount. I mean, my first project was when I worked as the Assistant City Manager in Norwich. It's about, that's about 38,000 population. And I'll put it in a plug. It does have a harbor, and it does have a federal turning basin. And they do bring oil barges up it. So I have some experience with some water fronts. We did a senior center there. In Webster, we did a new fire station for about a half a million dollars. And we did a revamp of the town hall for about a million two, which was mainly electrical infrastructure, it had 1920s wiring that we had to upgrade. We also did a lot of water and sewer projects, a lot of extensions. There's a lake there. And the lake is Jagagagag, Jagagagagungamog, largest natural lake in the state, 1,400 acres, for which we watered and sewed it because it was septic and well over there. And we spent probably about 15 million dollars. And we were one of the first communities to get the SRF loans at the 0%. And we pushed it through, and it's worked out wonderfully for them. Stoughton, I was on the tail end of a public works, where they rehabbed a public works facility. Their fire station and police station are fairly new, it's less than 10 years old. The biggest project that I had there was the, I was on the tail end of the connection with the NWRA. But that was a bid job, it was a contractor job, it wasn't a town job. We just had to, you know, basically watch and sit on it.
One other question I had is, what kind of experience have you had with respect to like local emergency planning? And really, what I'm focusing on is more like any type of outbreaks, pandemics or epidemics. And how's that prioritized in Stoughton?
Well, we have, we're fortunate to have a Public Health Nurse Association that's in the town hall. It's one of our enterprise funds. So we have nurses on staff in the town hall that go out and do the visiting nursing end of it. Them, the nurses, along with the Board of Health, do a wonderful job. And they have emergency plans, along with the schools, to set up emergency dispensing centers, that type of activity. Those plans are already in place, along with the fire department. But our nurses there are leading the charge on that one. The only other experience I had was we had an E. coli outbreak in Webster in the water supply. And of course, that causes quite a bit of angst amongst the residents. In fact, we even had the National Guard come in to do some reverse osmosis of public water supply. And we set it down by the lake so people could get water at no charge during that time, if they wanted it.
Thank you.
Sean?
Yeah, you mentioned, Joe had asked you what your toughest job was. This is going to be my toughest, and I can probably speak for the rest of the board here. You are at an advantage there, four finalists, and you're the last to come in. So I asked this question once before of another candidate for a different reason. But you being the last, what can you say that's going to make me favor you over any of the others? Mark, I liked what I heard, your answers, your experience. But what will you bring to this town more so than a younger guy or a person with more experience? But, you know, I mean, you're in a, it's a tough competition. So it's, you know, it's.
Basically, what I think I can bring for you is this, is that, and I live in the South Shore area. I live about a 35 minute drive from here. As I stated earlier, I have a, my youngest son is in high school. So for the time being, I would be a commuter. What you're going to get from me is, if you look at my resume, I'm not particularly much of a job hopper. And I'm certainly looking for a place to finish what I think is a pretty good career in Situate, which I think is a great town. So I think, you know, I would certainly, you know, bring that to you. What I'm also going to bring to you is, based upon what's happened to me in other communities, I'm not the kind of guy who's going to cut and run. When times get tough, it's not like I'm going to put my resume out. And I did not during all the controversy that was going on. I was not seeking other jobs. I was there to finish it out to the end. As I stated before, anyone is going to be able to manage your town when times are good. Who's going to stand by you when times are tough? You know, and it gets back to the relationship with the board and the communication and the trust and the loyalty that's going to bring you through those times. So if what you're looking for, what I think you're looking for, is someone who's going to be around a while, I think I'm your guy. Because I'm at the right age, I got quite a bit of experience with that. And you won't have to search for another town administrator. And I think that would be advantageous to you.
Thank you.
Rick?
Five years from now, say you get this job, you get the good call in a couple of weeks from us. Five years from now, what skills have you improved of your own? What sort of challenges are you particularly looking forward to in terms of your own abilities? Things you might not have had experience with in your past that you would hope to develop here over the next five years? Not five years from now, I mean you're done, but just, you know, medium timeframe.
I would say I would want to have more experience in emergency preparedness. You are a shoreline community, you're susceptible to more of those types of activities. So I would certainly want to be better at that. I would also want to have a better relationship with the state legislative delegation. Relationship we have in Stoughton is not as good as it should be. Communication mainly.
Is it a lack of a relationship or a friction type thing?
It's not a friction, it's, we don't get a lot of communication, not as much as I'm used to.
Yeah.
You know, I'm.
Interesting point.
In my previous community, in the town of Webster, our state rep lived in town. So it was very easy to communicate with him, to see what was going on. You could go with him and have a coffee, you could meet with him for breakfast. And in Stoughton, our reps don't live in town, and it's difficult to get a hold of them. I mean, they're very good, they'll call you back or email you. But it's not the same type of personal relationship, you know, that I'm used to. I'd like to develop that more here. Because I think that's important, to have your finger on the pulse of what's going on in Beacon Hill. Because that's, you still get a substantial amount of money, you know, through local aid. And also, if there are projects that are coming on, whether they be the federal stimulus package that's now passing through the states in Massachusetts, it's going to go through the legislature. So, I mean, you really have to have your finger on the pulse and know when these things are going to be coming out. So I want to develop that kind of relationship as well.
Okay, thanks. That was an interesting answer.
All set, Joe?
Thank you. I think that does it. Thank you very much.
It couldn't have been that quick.
Huh? Well, it was a half an hour. I mean, it was about a half an hour. Believe it or not, we're a minute, two minutes ahead of schedule, so.
Do you have any, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you have any questions of us?
I do, I have one. Maybe I shouldn't have asked.
Give it up, I've got 25 seconds.
No, I can't pronounce the name of a boy.
I remembered it from the last time. The only question I'd like to ask is, what has to happen within the first six months so that the selectmen, so that this board is convinced that they made the right choice?
It's a good question to be asked.
Was that directed to the chairman, Mark?
I think the fact that you're still here, my friend. Let me attempt to give my answer, and the board will certainly give theirs. I think at the end of a six month period, if we find that you are happy with your job and it's everything, the town is everything that you expected it to be, that you outlined tonight, that would make us feel very good. I think from our point of view, if we saw a person in you or whoever we might choose who was able to come into town, not change the town in six months, we know that's not, maybe not change the town at all, but who got the support of not only ourselves, but the department heads in the building, department heads throughout town, and most importantly, the citizens, I think would all be very happy at that stage of the game.
I would just say that, you know, if in six months, the board has to address the issue, then that person's probably not going to be here that seventh month. I think it's fair to say the expectations of the new town administrator for that person to come in is going to be looking at 12 months to 18 months. I personally don't think, you know, I'm expecting dramatic changes. But like any person, they're going to put their own imprint in their own way. And I expect that whoever he or she is, that they will add something that is going to benefit the town. Now, I don't know whether it's going to be from a management style with the department heads, whether it's going to be a community outreach experience with the people of Situate. But I think it's fair to gauge over a 12 to 18 month period, there will be change. And we'll get the vibes, I'm sure the town administrator will get the vibes. And of course, I don't want to be looking in seven months or 12 months saying, okay, we've got a new person, we've got to look for a new person. So I think, you know, it's a fair question to ask. But I think, you know, the selection process and going through this and going through all the numerous resumes, interviewing first time through executive session and then bringing, of course, you, Mark, as well as three other candidates before us, we did so because we've asked a lot of questions, we vetted out a lot of things to really kind of hone in on, hopefully, four candidates that could take and assume that position and do a good job for the town. And so I'm hoping that we're not going to have in six months. I don't think the expectation should be, because I don't, given the financial situation we're going through, the economy's changing, the state's budget's changing, not just on a monthly but weekly basis, I think it would be unfair for us to say, oh, in six months, you haven't gotten us out of the hole. So therefore, I'm not saying you're suggesting that, but I mean, that's the reality of it. So I think, you know, the person who comes in here is going to have latitude to do a good, a job, hopefully a good job. And obviously, you know, in 12 to 18 months, we're going to know how good that job is. That's my expectation.
John?
I'm sorry I asked that question, but to, just to repeat.
I guess I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, no, that's all right, no. I mean, look behind you, you have many department heads here, you have residents. I think what Joe and John kind of said the same thing. Not much will change, and that's not such a bad thing. There are things that you'll do differently than Rick Agnew, and there will things, hopefully, you do the same. So I think like John alluded to, six months is too quick. But I hope in six months, whoever's sitting in that chair over there, and things keep going the way they're going. I don't think things are so bad here.
I don't think they are either.
Really don't. So it's, this is.
I think things here, all things considered, I think things here have run very well. And that's one of the reasons why I applied for the position.
Right. Rick?
Six months, like this guy said, six months, pretty short fuse. You know, you've still got to figure out where the post-its are located and all that sort of stuff, and where the office supplies are, six months. But.
There aren't any.
Six months, yeah. That's right, sorry, we took care of that one last week. Yeah. Frankly though, I'd like some ideas. I mean, the new TA, all four of the candidates are very intelligent, eyes open, have varying degrees of varying different types of work experience in the past. So surely some ideas. I'm not looking for someone to jump in and start, you know, with two feet and start making all sorts of huge changes. But frankly, I do think there's some opportunities for changes in the town. I think every town has an obligation to consider changes over certain timeframes. Rick Agnew has been here for, you know, 20 years, 19 years. And he's done a great job in many, many ways. And as the TA, as you know, you get a lot of flack that is very undeserved. And he's gotten a lot of flack that's undeserved. And so I think a new TA coming in really needs to start being very careful about, you know, what they hear and making sure they're separating out the BS that's getting thrown at them and developing the skill set of, and the tone of the town. And identifying some things that we can do better. The town is remarkably well-run. We've been very fiscally conservative, which I think is great. Agnew in particular, I marvel at his financial abilities. And so, you know, if you can have, in six months, if you can have a tenth of his financial abilities, then you're doing really well. abilities, then you're doing really well. Okay? And, but, you know, after six months, there should be some ideas. Nothing implemented, but I'm always willing to listen to, get broken out of my own comfort zone. There's some things that I know we do really well here, but I'd be interested if other people think we do those same things well or not, or how we can do them better.
I'll be brief. It's, you know, six months, you're still going up the learning curve. I would expect you to have avenues of communication with all your department heads and start building those relationships. And I would expect you to have a good base understanding of our financial condition and a good understanding of where we stand with the state. And no, I mean, we just got another email today that said the numbers changed again. So, you know...
They come out every week.
Right. So, you know, I would, I would expect you to understand where we sit right now and be part of the planning to where we're going to be six months from then, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, thank you. Going forward, I think I'm going to give you now a, when we finish, a email, Kim Donovan's email address. And I would ask you sometime within the next day or so, if you'd be good enough to send her a list of, say, five references that we could, that we could check. And we, you know, we will check the finalists, maybe the two finalists or whatever the case might be. But let me give you that, if you can send that to her, we'll take it from there. I would appreciate that. The process going forward, again, I'm saying it with not a lot of surety. We would hope, my intention would be to make a decision next Tuesday night, the board to vote on their choice for the new town administrator. It may or may not happen, you know, it may need more time, because I just, I don't know. But that would be my thought, to do that next Tuesday, which is the night. Contact the candidate who was chosen shortly thereafter, the next day, hopefully. Either meet with that candidate, probably meet with that candidate, draw up a salary schedule, the memorandum of understanding of a contract, so we'd both be on the same page, know what we're getting into on both sides. And hopefully the candidate would accept and that was, that would be the end of the process. With the hopes of bringing the candidate on board by the first week in July, the end of the first week in July, it may even be towards the middle of July. So, as this, as this, as this meeting's going on, my data's going further ahead. But you, you know, you know town government, you know municipal government, sometimes it works a little slow. But again, I congratulate you as I did all the other candidates and I congratulate the board. Let me just take one second here just to say, there was great resumes. We saw the, you saw the cream of the crop, if I can put it that way, here tonight. Not to say that, that the other 40 to 50 resumes that we reviewed were not good. Majority of them were very good. Majority of them were excellent. It was a tough decision before we even got to the semifinal stage. And it was even a tougher decision to get to this stage. And unfortunately for us, it's even a tougher decision getting down to the final candidate because it's, as Sean alluded to, it's going to be very difficult because we've had such great candidates, we had great candidates in front of us tonight.
Good position for you to be in.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I'm sure time will prove that correct. Having said that, let me give you this, Mark. Thank you so much for coming in and...
Thank you, John. Mark?
Likewise, thank you.
Again, thank you. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Who's the, the interviews for town administrator? As I said, the board will make, will contemplate what they've heard, what they've read, what they've seen, and a decision will be made by the board, hopefully next Tuesday night if the board feels that's the avenue they want to take.
Move to adjourn?
Questions before we adjourn? Anyone?
I didn't know if there were any from the... Nope.
No. Does it take a motion?
Motion to adjourn at 8:25.
Second.
All a favor?
Aye.
Post, unanimous? Thank you all.
Goodnight, folks. Thanks.